Hey everyone, this is the Planning Board meeting of all to see eighteen to seven P M. Of all who rise for the black suit please.
.............................................
Okay Desiree to you for the open public meeting statements please.
Notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act and the annual notice of meetings. A copy was posted on the township website. A notice of this meeting was sent to the Sentinel and a copy was posted at the Franklin Township Municipal Building.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Ranson?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Malady?
Here.
Mayor Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Travoloni?
Here.
And Chairman Hatch?
Here.
And we're going to seat Mr. Ranson for Joe Suede and we'll seat Carl for Tim Doyle tonight as well, please. All right, we have Resolution P B O five dash two oh two three which is the matter of adoption of the Fair Housing Act. Is there a motion to accept P B O five twenty three?
Certainly.
I got a motion in or a second?
Second.
Moving second, roll call vote please.
I have a question. What's the difference, I want to hear last one so I know that the recommendation was made, but what's the difference between the motion to make the recommendation and this one? What's the difference?
I'm going to turn it to Chris. There was a need for two separate resolutions. Chris, you want to explain the difference between the two?
Sure, I'm just going to tell you exactly. There's quite a few things we did last month, all related to the housing element of master plan. One was adoption of the housing element, housing plan element and fair share plan as a component of your municipal master plan, which is this board's jurisdiction to adopt the plan. The second was ordinances related to that master plan in terms of the creation of the affordable housing overlay zoning districts and then three or four other ordinances, new housing penalties, which was a first item of a existing housing fees, new affordable housing ordinance stating the requirements for affordable housing if a building ever gets built, amendment to the zoning map to show the affordable housing overlay districts. And is there one I'm forgetting here? Please. If there was, I kind of, I wouldn't have anything to do with the affordable housing. So that's what, these are all resolutions memorializing action taken by the board last month, which was to adopt the housing plan. And then since the ordinances changing your zoning map and changing your zoning code and all other codes in the township can only be done by the township committee, it was referred to you by the committee and your recommendation was for the committee to adopt those ordinances. That's, that's the distinction is you adopted the plans that is under your jurisdiction, but the committee has to adopt the ordinances and you have to recommend adoption or changes to it today.
Okay, Desiree, I have a motion in a second. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Ranson?
Upstate.
Mr. Kelly?
Upstate.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mayor Bruno?
Right.
Mr. Travoloni?
Yes.
And Chairman Hatch?
Yes. All right, what do we, Desiree, what do we have there? Are we okay with the exceptions? We had four or is there a need, a need of necessity here?
We're okay because it's those who voted, who were here and voted, you don't need the majority of it.
Okay, I'm just making sure that we're covered there.
All right, let's move on to Resolution P B O six, which is the other half of the
affordable housing piece. Is there a motion to approve P B O six?
Motion to approve P B O six twenty three.
Moving second, roll call vote please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Ranson?
Upstate.
Mr. Kelly?
Upstate.
Mr. Malady?
Yeah.
Mayor Bruno?
Upstate.
Mr. Travoloni?
Yes.
And Chairman Hatch?
Yes. Okay, move on, there's only one application tonight, which is P B twenty three oh seven, Kenny Doring Jr. Doring?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Let's sway in first, please.
Raise your hand. It's very testimony about the good being truth, about the truth, so if you got.
I do. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How we doing, all right?
We're doing fine.
Good.
We're doing fine. Why don't you start with explaining what you would like to do here or modify.
Ah, not too good at public speaking.
It's all right.
Basically, we, we're trying to remove the sidewalks from the perimeter of the entire property, from, I guess Pioneer Meadow to all the way around to the corner of Williamstown and Fryes Mill Road. Correct?
All right, at your request, what changed since the hearing of the application and requirement of sidewalks?
Well, since, since I bought, since I bought the property, it's kind of a ghost town over there. I mean, we have an occasional quad or bike sneak in there, but we got no kids running. That was from my understanding from the athletic director, Ken, that you, that my property was a registered state track and field runway and they used to come out on that, that road and around the corners. What we did was when I bought the property with Pierre, we kind of proposed that we put the track on the opposite side, on the village dock side. I put some machines there, we, we kind of built the track for them, they're loving it. It's really nice, but no one runs in that area anymore, so.
If I recall correctly, that was a concern about back when the application was here in front of the board, if I'm memory surfing correctly, it was a concern about Delsey was using it as a field pretty attractive for across country and someone moving in over a new house complaining about kids running across the front lawn and that's why the sidewalks were there. But now I understand your testimony that that no longer is the case and that they've built an alternative location for the cross-country team and it sounds like, you know, there is no other sidewalks in that area, so removing it would conform with the area out there. Is that correct synopsis?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And I, I believe that they, they start at the middle school kind of in a, you know, Ken could tell me more. I do have a letter from Ken, some, some simple letter, but you're just stating what we did there for them. I believe they start like at the middle school and they go towards the village dock, back through the woods, along the lake back there, they come out to the field, the far side field, I guess on this side of Delsey, and they come around down Fryes Mill and then cut down the middle school road again, so, so the kind of.
So they're not going out of school, we'll prove these properties are.
Right.
I know exactly the trail, I run away many times, so I know we saw.
Yeah.
Is any board, before I open the republic, does any board have questions or comments for Mr. Doring? I don't entertain a motion to open the application to a public.
Motion to open in public?
Okay, again, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, where, is anyone in the audience which has a comment or questions on this application or request?
Move to close.
All right, move.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is there a, does anyone have questions? If not, is anyone in a position to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to. Yeah, but best to, the sidewalk and the prior something.
Just to clarify, we didn't talk about the basic, which back in December of twenty one, this is approved as three new lots plus the remainder. That resolution has various conditions. The applicant is not seeking any changes to those conditions, right? They all stay in place. Everything about the prior approval except for the sidewalk.
I mean, if you want to, if you need to refresh me, you can. I mean, I have it in my back pocket right now as far as the other stipulation to the approval was that we got one, one point zero three, the property next to Pioneer Meadow, we got the well approval. We did get the D E P well approval, the county, Matt, at the county has, I have an email from Matt stating that we need this approval for him for that to be subdivided before we get that well approval.
Right, so my point being he's not asked for anything to change.
Anything else except for the way we rule the summer.
Right, everything else stays the same.
Do I mention the old number?
That's the P B twenty one oh five.
Twenty three oh seven?
Okay, the only one I have here is twenty one oh five, so this new one is twenty three oh seven. So just amending that prior approval with that one amendment.
Yeah, granting the waiver for the sidewalk.
Correct, got it.
Moving seconded, roll call vote please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Ranson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mayor Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Travoloni?
Yes.
And Chairman Hatch?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Doring, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks guys, have a good night.
Okay, let's go back to you Desiree. Can you touch on the correspondence for the freshwater in the paying report?
Yes, so I received via mail, the freshwater wetlands letter of interpretation for block six nine oh two, block forty seven, the Woody. This was before my time as secretary, so I included it in everyone's packets. They sent this, they sent this to the planning board secretary. It is just legal notification and application for freshwater wetlands letter of interpretation has been submitted to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Division of Land Use Regulation for a presence or absence determination on the above referenced property. The complete application package can be reviewed at either the municipal practice office or by appointment at the department's tracking office.
And was there any other correspondence?
We also received a letter from the Gloucester County Planning Department and this is in reference to buyer's.
Buyer's?
Yes. The Land Development Review Committee of Gloucester County Planning Board has reviewed buyer's application for site plan approval and has taken the following action based on the plans received on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. They denied until some county requirements are satisfied and they have their requirements listed.
And they have, okay. All right, moving on to the minutes of the July eighteenth meeting, is there a motion to accept the minutes of July eighteenth?
I have a motion.
I have a motion?
Second.
I'm a second, roll call please.
All right, you guys go faster than I'm going.
It's all right, take your time.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Ranson?
Upstate.
Mr. Kelly?
Upstate.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mayor Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Travoloni?
Yes.
And Chairman Hatch?
Yes. Okay, before we move to the closed session, might I do, correspondence or communications earlier, there will be a need for a closed session this evening?
Yes.
Okay, before we go there, the last meeting, I brought up the idea of whether or not to continue with the general public portion because the public portion turned away from its intent of trying to help people with questions about the master plan and the planning in general. And I asked the board to consider it over the month and we're, we're to that point now. Is there input from the board on whether to continue with, well, before we go there, I want to go to Michael. Michael, explain again for the record the requirement for a public portion in a general public portion versus a public portion on an application that someone would bring forward. Can you explain that to the board so we have that, an understanding and then we'll go into discussion from there?
Yeah, well, the basics of the Open Public Meeting Act are that meetings have to be open to the public like we're having here in this room. And when you have applications, you actually have public participation on these applications. The Open Public Meetings Act indicates that there's a couple of exceptions, that the municipal governing body and a board of education are required to have a general open public session. And it reads, we're public comment on any governmental or school district issue that a member of the public field may be of concern. So the only public bodies required to have a general open comment section, so to speak, is the governing body and the board of education. The law doesn't say this, but it seems pretty obvious to me. The reason for that is they're the elected officials. So they're elected, they're elected officials and those bodies have the open public portion. Whereas the zoning board and the planning board, you have your public hearings and you have your testimony to those.
Right.
It doesn't prohibit you from having that open public session. And right now the zoning board does not have it, they've chosen not to. The planning board has been having it and chosen to. Nothing preventing you from doing it, but nothing requiring you to do.
To do, and that's, that's the point I wanted to hear too.
And yeah, I just want to make one other point, I know that, and then having represented the school board for many years, the way the law reads, it's for a public comment on any issue. And there's so often it becomes an exchange, a debate about questions and demanding answers and back and forth. And really, if you have that kind of session, it's really just for people to be able to say, this is my concern, this is my comment, but not necessarily for anybody to be required to be answering questions or taking action. So can be done, not required, you're only required for governing body and sort of it.
Okay, excellent. All right, what's the board's feeling?
My comment will be to continue with the open public portion to give the residents an opportunity to comment on issues that we have here as a planning board, but not to make comments that are political in nature. This year we've had a rough year with our, with our process with the word redevelopment and the word affordable housing. Those are quite complicated issues that of course require from the public a lot of comment. We are not this board an elected position. Technically, we're a tool in the toolbox for the township committee and any of the tough, hard questions, I believe should go to people who are elected, the governing body and not to this committee. This committee again is a group of volunteers to help plan for the future. There are many opinions on what the future will be and we of course will provide and assist the town to reach that goal. But to get to, to get there, we obviously need input from the public. But my only question or statement to the public is, please stay on track, please don't be political and please try to gain information and not to attack.
Yeah, sure. What, Jim?
Well, I agree, I think that it's a good practice to allow folks to take their time out of their schedule and come to the meeting and have an opportunity to, to make a comment. But with that said, that the exchange back and forth should always be respectful and never in an attack mode. So I think that it would be a state to do.
I was going to say, you know, make it, make it clear that it'd be a seldom related question and possibly put a flag there, maybe somebody has to speak. Because that way if somebody comes to the meeting and they have something bothering them, they can get out and speak and listen and figure it out. You have a point.
Thanks, John. Do you agree?
It's an application, probably a resident.
Yeah, the application was never a question, Steve, never.
Maybe to that sidewalk.
Yeah.
And the obvious field should be focused on the application.
Okay, well, that's, I thank everyone for your input. We'll continue with a public portion, but it's going to be limited to only the master plan and planning in general. And if you have other comments that concern your individual opinion of people, take it to the township committee, it doesn't go home here. So with that said, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to open the public portion and Desiree, please put it back on the agenda.
Motion to open public portion.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in public portion, if anyone wishes to come forward with regards to a planning board question.
Dave Marshall, sixty-seven New Road.
Mr. Burrell, would you swear in please?
Well, we don't, we don't have to swear, we can one for, because they're just commenting.
Okay, all right, all right, go ahead.
I got a couple of questions. One about the, the vote that went on the night about the memorialization of the plan for the fair share housing and the overlays. Being as the township committee postponed it for a month, you know, what does that memorialization mean? Does that mean it locks those zones in now, being as they haven't made a decision?
It does not. It means that they, whenever the planning board takes an action, they have to put it in writing the following month.
Right.
So they're just saying, that's what we did then. What happened between then and now is, doesn't have any bearing on that.
Okay, I understand that, you know, agreeing to the vote, you know, and writing it in the minutes, but memorialization has a little bit stronger term than that, that's why I was asking. You know, usually when you read up memorialization, it locks it in and it cannot be altered in the future.
Well, that decision for that night is done. But whether it comes back around, you never know.
So, Mr. Marshall, it indeed locked in our vote, which was spread all over the place.
Right.
I was quite disappointed at the last township committee meeting when folks like yourself came up and spoke and asked questions and of course, Mr. Marshall, Mr. Marsh made the recommendation to extend the vote. In my opinion, it shouldn't have been extended, again, it's my opinion, because this thing became a reality and.
Yeah, but you're going off, you're going off topic. That, that, we did our job, we moved it forward to the township committee and at that point in time, it's up to them, it's no longer a planning board issue.
So the resolution was to confirm.
Right, and I appreciate that, you know, appreciate your insight. I do have a question, which I don't know if I can ask this here, but I wanted to. Where did the overlay zones come from, as in who was actually involved in that process of choosing them?
What met Chris?
That's what, I'm, I'm just asking, I thought I could ask it here, but I want to make sure.
That was about two years worth of back and forth between township staff, former engineer at C M A, Jim Mikowski, myself, I was involved in that in some capacity, regional outset, and then representative of the Fair Share Housing Center and Clark Haines, which is the court-appointed special master for affordable housing for this town.
Okay, I'm just curious why, why those particular zones were picked?
At least five to ten people over the course of two years were involved in identifying those particular areas and a lot of back and forth over those were the lots that were eventually even acceptable, both by the township and by Fair Share Housing Center and the court.
So, Mr. Marshall, the document was roughly three hundred pages.
Three hundred and four.
And there was a lot of things in there and I'm sure you read it and I read it and it was explained to me by our engineers that it just didn't happen in Malaga, plus the word Malaga. It happens because there's certain elements that must be in place for affordable housing overlay. One of the things is the folks that live there may not have a lot of money and they may not own a automobile. And the areas in question should be near a public transportation route. Last time I checked, there are no buses in Star Cross or Pine Hollow or other areas of the community, whereas Franklin Village and Malaga Village are serviced by a public service bus. So that's just one of the elements that must be present for this overlay area. That's part of the reason on how these areas were chosen, that they were close to public transportation. Once again, because they may not have automobiles, they, these people may walk and they would need a place to walk to. Again, Star Cross, Pine Hollow, there aren't too many commercial areas. Malaga at the present time appears to be the center of the township for commerce. Therefore, Malaga would be the area for housing where folks can walk to those stores. Those are just two of the reasons and I'm sure there are other reasons that Malaga rose to the top of the list for the ideal location for affordable housing. It just didn't happen, it wasn't here to upset Mr. Sayers who lives in Malaga because he at one time said, why Malaga? He let's say the same thing. It's because of the location. And then of course, the infrastructure of highways, Malaga's the only spot in the community that is serviced by three-state highways, fifty-five, forty-seven, forty. It's the only area.
Right.
And again, all those things come together and make the area of Malaga, I won't say an ideal, but the most beneficial location if we were to have that type of housing.
Well, how about on the other end though, the one like, we're on the other end of Franklin on the Clayton side.
There's another reason you need to remind, I'm a little old and I forget. One of the other elements for affordable housing is that indeed you could have a fourteen unit per acre density, which would require sewer and water. There's a theory that the lower end of the township, Malaga, is closest to violent, the land of sewer design. And if should sewer or water come in, the L S A would be a viable place for it to come in, hence Malaga. At the northern end of the town on Fryes Mill Road, again, it's near Clayton and near a sewer service area. And once again, let's just say Fryes Mill Road would be the corridor to bring sewer down, hence the overlay zone was chosen in that area. These are all reasons why those areas were chosen. No one chose those areas because they're next to your house.
I understand that.
For the effect, you, value of your home, they were done because it makes sense for planning.
And I understand that. What, what the reason I'm asking is when we were at the committee meeting, Mr. Lyons said there is no chance of hooking up the sewer near those areas, so that, that sort of is a mute point.
No chance?
Right, I understand that.
But, you know, twenty years from now, who knows? Okay? And, and those would be the prime areas, of course, where sewer can be connected, unless of course, some very wealthy developer wants to put in an onsite.
Yeah, standalone unit, right.
Yeah, standalone, it is possible.
Well, they've done it in other townships, so.
I want to go out on a limb here and say at my age, I'll never see sewer in Franklin Township. You're a bit younger than me, you may see it. I would bet my last dollar, I will never see sewer in Franklin Township.
And you may not, and I may not, we don't know, but my kids may, so.
Correct.
My fight isn't for me, it's for the other residents and for the future generations. I look at it from behind me, not in front of me. So that's the reason I ask these questions. I do have one other quick question about the, and this is something I found completely by accident. I brought up about using the recordings, you know, the videos as accurate rendition for the minutes. And I told you about all the cases that I found. You weren't here at that meeting, Mr. Burrell, but I also found in our own code, it says you can, that's exact worded, words, if you want to go verbatim, that says you can use the recorded version of the video to go back and make sure your questions are answered correctly in your minutes. That's in our code. That's eighty-three dash eight, paragraph G. So what I'm, my concern is this is what raises the questions and concerns about the transparency as the, the word that was thrown out, is when things aren't followed by our own code, it looks suspicious. And because of that, you have no idea how many people are reaching out to me over and over and over again where things that they're finding that don't make sense. And that's why I ask these questions, it is not to offend anybody, it is because there's suspicions and I'm trying to help this township eliminate that, trying to get to where we have.
I suggest you send that to the township administrator then at this point, if you feel that we could do better. I don't have a problem with that, but you need to address that to the township administrator because we're, we're not going to be able to answer that question for you. Transparency, we've been through this back and forth, as far as I'm concerned, I'm the most transparent person out there. This board is the only board that I know of that is, besides elected officials, that's holding a public portion section.
And we appreciate that.
Government doesn't do it, economic development doesn't do it, zoning doesn't do it, we're the only board that does it and the word transparency gets thrown out there. So at this point in time, as far as your minutes, concerned with your minutes, address it to the township administrator and if you're correct, I am sure he will be glad to direct the employees or inform the employees. Thank you.
Because it happened here, I was asking here, I wasn't looking to get attacked again, I was just asking.
You weren't being attacked, you were just getting, I was just stating a fact. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Sayers.
How you doing today?
I'm doing fine. Name and address.
Sorry, yeah, Chris Sayers, one eighty-four Malaga Lake Boulevard. I guess I have a question for Mr. Burrell and this does concern the planning board. Now, this is from the A C L U of New Jersey's website, so I don't know if it's accurate or not, and I could give you a copy if you'd like. This is in regards to the sunshine law and I understand that you do not have to have a public portion as a planning board. However, it does say that if a public body provides a time for public comment, the public body cannot censor the speech during the portion of time because it does not agree with you or, or like what you were saying. The public body also cannot prohibit comments based on subject. The public body also cannot prohibit comments based on subject matter, so long as comments relate to any issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the municipality.
And that comes from the statute that I was reading from before regarding municipal governing body and board of education. And that same state statute says that nothing in this act shall be construed to limit the discretion of a public body to permit, prohibit, or regulate the active participation of the public at any meeting. So, this board can regulate, prohibit, not have it at all. The ACLU, which deals basically with civil rights and so forth, my regulation is that comes from cases where, and I think it was actually a school board case, where like, somebody could come up and say, "Basketball coach is the greatest ever," and they say, "That's great." Somebody else comes up, "Basketball coach is the biggest jerk idiot I've ever met," and they go, "Oh, wait a minute, you can't say anything about a basketball coach." So, that's what that comes from.
Right.
And to my comment, we should only be answering planning and master plan-type questions. What becomes questions about primary elections and candidates and stuff like that, it doesn't belong here. So, it's not that we're not going to, we shouldn't be answering that question. We should be referring that either to the candidates or to the township committee. So, we shouldn't be, as much as we shouldn't be censoring people, we should be directing people to the right place to ask, right people to ask, right place to ask, and we shouldn't be answering for other people about primary elections and whether, you know, hands in the pocket and all that type of stuff. And that's what this is about. I'm the one that brought this public piece to the table a couple of years ago in an attempt to try to help people, and it changed in a different direction. Censoring, absolutely not. I don't believe in censoring either. But I'm certainly going to point people in the right direction when that question doesn't belong here.
Yeah. And I, look, I mean, obviously, we all have our scars from the redevelopment zone. I've lost my temper many times. I have been, I've been surprised at the amount, how quickly my temper goes when I'm behind the podium for some unfortunate reason, because I never lose my temper at all. And it's not something I like, and I've apologized for in the past.
We've all.
And, yeah, and I appreciate the time that you will continue to give us as a public. And I just think it's important, since the redevelopment zone, again, we use the T-word, the transparency word, you know, to heal those scars that may have been incurred on both sides during that whole debacle. You know, I think more transparency is the answer, not less. And I'm very happy, and that's fine, that it needs to be directed towards the planning board's business, because that's what the planning board does.
That's where you're.
And I appreciate that. So, and I'm thankful that you voted in favor of keeping the public portion. And lastly, in regards to the overlay zones, I know the principal philosophy behind the Mount Laurel decision, which is what pretty much started the whole affordable housing process, was to reduce concentrated poverty into, out of the state's urban areas, so that every municipality in the state will shoulder that burden. And my concern with the overlay zones is, for as well situated as Malaga is, just like as well situated as Newark may be, or Camden may be, we are concentrating poverty in one specific location in our municipality. And, I mean, I guess, I know Mr. Travaglioni had some input about that, you know, I would ask the board to consider that, because if it's bad to be concentrated in Newark and Camden, I think it's equally bad to be concentrated in Malaga, despite what may be going for it in terms of public transportation, shopping, everything else, so.
Chris, I appreciate your comment. And in wrapping that up and closing that, the resolutions we passed, it's been handed off to the township committee. Those type of comments need to go to the township committee, who has it under consideration now. And I also, a little bit of history, when we go back, and I was mayor, we had to build a lawsuit with a developer, and it cost the town millions and millions and millions of dollars and hours and hours trying to defend the town against a builder who brought a lawsuit. This is, this, not, is front of the township committee, now provides that protection from another builder filing a, filed a lawsuit. So, as, I wouldn't, I understand where you're coming from with the location, I really do. On the flip side of that, the town gets protection moving forward from another multimillion-dollar lawsuit from a builder who can file.
That's for two years, right?
Just less than 2025.
Till 2025, and then we're open to.
And it was back to everyone.
And then everybody's back in the.
Yeah. Not to say that it can't be continued at that point.
Yeah.
Protection is for a couple of years. And Chris, I lived through that, and it was not pretty. You know, trying to, trying to do the right thing, and at the same time, trying to defend the town, and, you know, it was, I wouldn't want to see the town go through that again. So, that's just my two cents.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Kevin Kelt.
Good evening, Kevin. I turned your mic off, Kevin, so I can't.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
That was one of my comments. I didn't quite understand the vote on the resolution. You have four abstentions, is that correct? And the resolution.
Two people weren't here, one person's conflicted. I don't have the count in front of me, but I knew two people weren't here to vote on the resolution, and Jake, the mayor as mayor, is conflicted. So, those people abstained on voting on the resolution tonight, you referred?
Yeah, there were two resolutions.
Yeah.
The first two that came up.
Right.
But we had three yeses, right?
Four.
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 So, how, how many yeses do you need to pass a planning board resolution?
That's why I asked the question to Mike.
You could have one if only one person's here.
Okay. As opposed to five for zoning.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no, the same thing with zoning. For memorialization, it's the same thing. You're just having the people who voted for the action taken, voting on the resolution. If only two of them are there, but that's good enough.
Right.
This wasn't an application that they were going, it wasn't site plan approval, Eric. This was just memorializing a decision they had already made last month.
So, that's the difference. If it was an application, how many would you need to pass a resolu, to pass an application?
All right, simple majority. Yeah, simple majority on an application, but memorializing a resolution that took the vote on the previous month, you don't need the majority there. And the reasons were the abstentions, is two people weren't here last month, two or three, and the mayor's conflicted on the affordable housing because he put this one in front of the township committee.
Okay. I just, Joe, I could hear you well, in the back.
I know.
Ralph? I could hear you well. There's nobody else up here with slightly bad ears. I don't know if we have, do we have a new sound system?
We have one coming.
Okay, so that's going to be corrected in the future.
You can spend any money for 30 days, some day. Twenty, twenty. Airfield best of money.
Okay.
It's over.
So, I'll be able to hear Mike, I'll be able to hear the engineer, I'll be able to hear you, I'll be able to hear on this side.
I'm not footed in, so I'm not making any problems.
We have plenty of seats in the front.
Well, it's not a big room. We should be able to hear everybody. John, I can't, couldn't hear a word you said today.
I'm sorry. Court has a standing issue, so.
Okay, so that'll be corrected. Thank you. And Joe, one other thing, you mentioned the environmental commission doesn't have a public portion. They do, because I have been at those meetings.
A formal public portion, and environmental, economic does the same thing.
Yeah.
The entire meeting, so if somebody was in there and wanted to ask a question, it does, what I was referring to was a formal public portion where, you know, the motion second is done. Yeah, there are, there are boards, and, you know, I stand corrected in that, that there are boards, and what I'm thinking of is that coming through about, and you were there, the entire meeting, someone can speak up and ask a question.
Yeah, it's a small town, and we have these, these boards, and everybody knows each other, and, you know.
Exactly, yeah. So, all of those boards, historically, all of them, you know, there's conversations going back and forth, but what I was referring to was an official public portion, being the difference.
Okay, thanks, gentlemen.
Anyone else? Mr. Morris, how are you this evening, sir?
Very good, sir.
Hey, hey, good day.
I'm limping along.
Bill Morris, 585 Oak Avenue. Just master plan, is there any movement on the hearing starting or anything?
Yeah, okay. Working on it.
Concerned because it's August.
Yeah, I understand. Actually, Andrew whispered in my ear tonight, so, and that's why I leaned over here. So, yeah, we know that has to get taken care of.
Hopefully, it's public hearings, because, you know, me and the camera, I would like the video.
Not a competition.
All the competition is better. No problem.
Jake?
He's trying to save money on the sound and audio in here.
There you go.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Bill. Jason.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jason Brandt, 688 Rosemont Avenue. Can you elaborate on what you're going to the closed session for?
Oh, we will as soon as we make the motion to go.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned it previously, that's why I brought it up in case you didn't.
No problem, thanks. Entertain a motion to close public portion.
Motion to close.
Sorry.
No, that's all right.
Thought there was another one.
Take your time.
Jeffrey Link, Jackson Avenue, Franklinville. Mr. Travalone, you did a good job explaining why those zones were created. I'll give you a different perspective from the north zone, because I heard a lot from Malaga, I didn't hear anything from those Jackson, Washington, Grant.
Well, I did mention the Clayton sewer.
Well, you did. No, you did, you did mention that, but I just, I just, I understand the Clayton sewer. We don't have busing and public transportation, and I should say, Mr. Bruno said, yet. So, hopefully, we don't. But I just, you know, the rural farming area there and that character, we're battling another issue there now that's not, is the solar farm, and that's, I guess that compounds it. So, when I hear low-income housing, solar farm, low-income housing, literally like, we're getting boxed in here and taking away that character, that area, it's very concerning for those who are, who live in that area. And I just wanted that to be heard, since no one spoke about the north. But I appreciate everyone's time, and thank you very much.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? Entertain a motion to close public portion.
Motion to close public portion.
Move and second all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Michael, now to answer Jason's question, I understand there is a need for a closed session, and what would that need be, sir?
That would be to discuss the ongoing solar litigation.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So, second.
Move and second. Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Michael, will there be any decisions made afterwards?
I don't anticipate any public vote happening to be taken, and it should take about 15 minutes.
Okay, 15 minutes with no public vote afterwards. All right, okay, thank you very much. All right, Brad, at this time, I have to ask to clear the room. Motion to go back into general, general session.